We're gonna call the meeting to order at about 5:35. Welcome, everybody. I hope you all have a very good and healthy and productive summer. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes of June 11th, our last meeting. Anybody have any comments, edits, additions as well? Okay. So, okay, a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes, June 11th.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So moved, and moving on to financial statements.
So, thank you for signing those. I'll be happy to get those filled out. I did send out late electronically the report that I did put in front of you. I will do my best to get them out earlier next time. And if there is something that you want to see done different, I'm happy to take feedback as we go into this school year. So, just let me know if there's something missing that you want to see or something that you'd like to change. I'm happy to take it into consideration.
Great.
So, we've closed out the end of year for fiscal '19 with the town. Incumbents are nearing over, are just shy of $90,000. And our school choice rollover, as stated, is $1,027,000, of which $66,000 is left on fiscal year '19. And then we had prior year funds remaining of over $900,000. And then the last piece of FY '19 to close out is to file the end-of-year DSE report, which is due by October 1st. So, I'll be working on that in the coming weeks. Moving into '20, there's not a lot to report on the expenditure side of things so far. I did give you the expenditure report. Happy to take questions or comments on that. Looking at school choice numbers for '20, we're just over $450,000. And I am currently going through the FY '20 budget document to make sure that everything is in alignment and up to par, as there are changes in staffing or just taking a look at formulas and making sure that everything is where it needs to be.
Great. Okay. All right. Any questions? Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Moving right along here. Any public comment this evening? No? Okay. Moving along. So, discussion items. The joint MASC annual conference. Who's handling that? Do we need an official delegate appointed from the committee?
We do. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to make it this year.
Okay.
Anyone going?
Definitely going.
Do you head out to the conference at all? Have you been yet?
I haven't.
I wish you were interested in that.
Well, we could just table it.
Table it.
Sure. Or appoint one and an alternate, and then just let it fall into place.
I mean, you have no one yet.
It's not a big deal. It's little.
From what I've seen, it's not exactly changing the direction of education. Yeah, maybe this is the year. Frontier will be sending, I know there's several people from the other communities going.
I do enjoy going.
The general interests of our area will get it.
It's an excellent project.
Okay. Safe schools grant.
Did you want to, did you want to know what Lori was talking about? She was like, "Truedown" from there.
Sure. Sorry. Let's move to a discussion of charging stations for electric on vehicles.
Thank you for putting me on the agenda. And then you have a lot more immediate things to do than any of that can do.
Right.
If anything, if you are interested.
So, I'm on the energy committee. And it came to our attention that there is some grant funding currently. It actually is, just as a fun fact, money that the state got as part of their Volkswagen settlement.
Oh.
So, that's where some of that money went. And so, we got into the ins and outs of putting in a charging station. There was some interest from the select board about putting one in town. And then I just put together a quick Google survey to see if there's interest at the school. I didn't differentiate between whether the people who said that they drive EVs were at Frontier or Deerfield. But the reason that we thought we would look at doing the elementary is because it would be more logistically manageable because the town owns the lot. So, you can see here that we get a cost for a technical charging station. If we were to get the grant, it would fund 60% of that. And then there's these other added fees. Most of the other things can be done in-house here on TownFop with the DPW. But there would be an electrical installation hookup charge. The other thing that's available now is Eversource will bring the lines to the charger. Then we need an electrician to do the final hookup. So, that's, I'll call it the make ready grant. So, that is a program that's happening now. And then they require, which is kind of new from a lot of the current charging stations, they require a system that the users can pay somehow. So, there would be an annual cost also. Downward says projected usage. I just came up with some numbers. It's a great algebra problem here of what I, you know, what we could estimate it would be used at, what a possible charge might be per hour. I noted that Greenfield has got some new charging stations at their new parking garage. I'm not sure how they landed on $1.25 an hour. But I have gotten some feedback that the current cost of gas, it barely, you know, it's not really a great deal to plug in versus, and it's also reflective of what it would cost for you to plug in at home and how far you have to drive. And if your car is EV only, I have a Volt that also goes on gas, so I'm not gonna be super desperate for a charge. So, it was great to talk with Dave Purinton at Deerfield Academy. They've had some charging stations there for a couple of years, and they're getting a few more. So, is it, you know, an immediate necessity? No. Is it a nice idea for the future direction we want to be thinking? And the idea that the fewer fumes in a, you know, school parking lot, the better? Anyway, on the back, if Eversource came out and went with the DPW to look at where the best location would be in regards to where the current power is. So, hopefully this makes some sense to you. It's across from the current handicap space, and it would take advantage of the extra wide lane there because one of the spaces, one of the...
That's where you park.
That's your parking spot. So, it comes with a Tesla. So, yeah, I was just saying that one of the spots has to be accessible to a handicap vehicle.
Right.
So, those two spaces would have to be EV only if we put in a, if you were to put in a motor there.
And then what's the one behind it? You said maybe reserve that spot or something? Or RSC?
You know what? These are, I don't know whose handwriting that is. It's Kevin's. So, it would be the two spots. One wouldn't be handicap accessible and one would be.
Oh, I see.
But it doesn't have to be, it's not a handicap-only space. It's an EV-only space that could also be used by a van.
Right. So, Eversource would run the line from this pole or put a new pole in, it looks like, here. Run the line along the property, along the trees.
Yeah. And there is, I just went up there, there is a light pole there. So, I'm guessing that's probably why they chose that spot.
Gotcha. Yeah. Okay. So, can I ask a couple of questions? I'm sorry. Are you telling us this because you are wanting us to, let's say we're all in favor, wanting to make a decision to go for it in our parking lot? And if so, is there money that you're asking the school committee to spend on that?
So, I'm providing information. Before the town could apply for a grant, they have to get some feedback from the school committee, is what I understand from, well, I guess from the board here. But that's what Diana said. And then as far as, so obviously every grant comes with its, you know, cost. As far as where the $3,140 would come from, I know that there are potential private foundations in my head of, I don't, I don't know right off the top of my head where that money would come from. But as far as the Eversource part, they've made it clear that there's no obligation to follow through on the grant if we do the preliminary, you know, application. As far as the grant for funding 60% of the charger, I think they, they want you to want it before you apply for it. So, I'm giving information as an energy committee member of something that is the money that's available now that might want to be considered by the school committee.
It says that the town submitted a preliminary application for the Leary lot.
Yes.
And your information seemed to suggest that our lot would be a better place or an additional place?
No, an additional place.
An additional, okay.
So, if I've gathered this right, we were looking at places in town that we would look at doing EV and spots. And, you know, the Leary lot would be one because there's electricity right there. It's downtown. It's central. People could use it. It makes sense. Then the other thoughts were, is there an appetite for that? You know, one or two at the school, one or two at Frontier. And so, we thought, you know, we'd have to have buy-in from the school committee. Are they interested in that? Is it something that there's a demand for? And I know you've done some survey work to see if there was. And there's some, you know, policy we'd have to come up with and like, who has access to this? How it works? I mean, it's kind of the future is where we're going is eventually there'll be more and more of these using them. So, we're just trying to think, like, if we're gonna pave a parking lot at some point, something to think about. Is it something we want to do now or pave the parking lot and then cut it up for this later on? Just kind of forward thinking, you know, where we're going with that stuff.
And the other piece about the school is that, you know, real transient parking, like right in front of Cheslitz or something, it wouldn't make sense to charge there. You want to leave someplace for at least an hour, probably, before you get it. So, that's cool. People are here for it. So, that's another reason why I, you know, we look at this place.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Anybody have any further questions? All right. Thank you, Lori. Thanks. Ken, you want to take over?
Sure.
All right. We moved down in the discussion.
I assume that you moved down.
So, back up to safe schools grant, probably.
Safe schools grant. You didn't take care of it. Can anybody on the delegate?
No, we didn't do that. We tabled that. You want to be the delegate?
No.
Okay.
So, it's safe schools grant?
Yeah. So, we were awarded, I sent you guys an email when we awarded, but I haven't said it, probably the press release. But we were awarded, all of our schools received a safe schools grant. And I really want to thank Scott Paul and the principals for putting that together way back in March. But basically, how it's going to affect Deerfield is, Deerfield was awarded $31,000. It's a non-matching grant, so, meaning that that money's straight up for us to use. We don't have to use any other school funds to match with it to improve the safety, different safety things about our building. So, we're gonna be putting that money to improving camera and accessways into the building. We had already been in progress, changing to the key fob system. The grant did not allow us to go back and pay for that, what we did at the end of last spring. So, we're gonna be able, we've kind of adjusted it and moving it forward to pay for improving. Kind of were doing the very basic. Now, we can kind of do a little bit more. So, you know, things to note, for example, we can, we'll know when doors are propped. You know, if there's an access during the school day, it's not supposed to be there. So, improving upon the key fob system. And the key fob system is up and running and hopefully running smoothly on the county teams looking down. But up and running smoothly, so we have switched over from the key entry to the key fob system. That's gonna really help us, really allow us to be a public building with more safety in sense so that we can keep people out during the school day. We'll also have access on the weekends and be able to apply keys to both. So, because their past access codes and stuff, you got it on Saturdays, we get it on Monday morning. So, not many more. So, creating different things there. So, it was wonderful we got that. And it's also, you can see, it's in my principal's report, I mean, my superintendent's report, the exact numbers. Hold on, the good old days. Where each school receives different amounts based on what their needs were. So, that is your safe, surprising, cleanest grant.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Deerfield capital appropriation of $27,000 generator funds.
Yes. So, I was contacted by, were you, was that contacted? Were you contacted? Someone contacted us. Both of us contacted. We're in the town that, back in 2013, we had started moving forward to put a generator in school. And from my understanding, I had to go back to the warrants in 2013 to figure this out because no one's in position. I was here in 2013. You know, taking from free cap, $27,000 to, you know, to put a, as a grant with matching funds, we don't really know where all this went. I don't know if it, whatever, but the money is sitting there. And so, what really, so I asked, they said, "What do you want to do with it? Do you want to put it back to town?" I said, "Really, I want to bring it back to the committee. This is where it started." To talk about whether or not we should be putting a generator in the school or not. And so, if we don't want to use it, the money is only appropriated for that and, you know, whether that can be for that. So, we will be giving it back. You can't say, "Hey, can we use it for books or vacations?"
I don't know if you remember, Ken, what that was about. I don't recall.
Well, we talked about, we've talked over the years about a generator for this building. The town's always, you know, they wanted to put a generator down at the treatment plant and, you know.
Yes, we do.
And, you know, there are multiple priorities. Frontier has a generator. It's not the full school, but it's a good emergency system there. And the thought had been in the past that we would have a generator put onto this building so that it could serve as an emergency shelter. That has not received much traction with the select board in the past. But we put $27,000 aside, from my recollection, in 2014 to begin the process of bringing this building up so that it could accept a generator. And with the eye towards it being part of overall, an overall generator budget.
Right.
And I don't know, we've made improvements on the electrical system, I think, some in this building. But I don't know exactly what's been done since then.
Right.
You know, when Darius sent this to me, that was my recollection. And I, you know, unless we want to submit a request for a generator in the coming school year again and see what the town fathers want to do with it, you know, the DEDIC wants to do with it, I mean, Capitol Plan wants to do with it.
Right.
I don't see any need for $27,000 on the books. I think we should just...
Yeah, I know that there's, they just prepped the spot for the one at the town hall, which I think is gonna go in pretty soon. That they've been, we've been sitting on capital over there for a couple of years, too, kind of waiting to get that done. So, I know that that's gonna go in, that will power the police station and town hall. So, I don't really, I was talking to Darius, and if we did have an emergency, I wasn't sure Frontier could be the, I mean, people would go to Frontier for, it's a bigger building, you've got more accessibility for emergency. But again, Frontier is not a Deerfield property. So, I wasn't sure if Deerfield had to have its own kind of area. And this was worthy to do. I mean, I could check in with the town and see what the thoughts were, if we want to, if it would be redundant or if it's something that is still, something that people want to move forward with and would want to fund in the next couple of years.
I mean, beyond an emergency shelter, there's always a concern that there could be a protracted power outage in town. And it's in the middle of winter.
Right.
How do you keep building systems and how do you keep the building warm so that we don't risk freeze-ups and all the wonderful things that can happen if you're out for a protracted length of time? But that's, I mean, in my, in my years in Deerfield, my street has lost power for almost 10 days, but not the center of town.
Right.
So, I just, I don't know. I would like to see personally that we at least have something to run the systems in this building.
Right.
In the event of a protracted power outage.
Was the $27,000 enough to cover the cost of the...
That would be enough to cover. The electrical system that was initially put in in this building provided for a generator link. But all it provided for essentially was the ability to run the boilers and some very minimal systems in the building. So, the $27,000 was intended to start the work towards doing all the work in the circuit, you know, the circuit boards and circuit breakers and circuits in the building so that we could switch over to generate the power if we had to, if a need arose.
And then you would need to prep the...
And then, I mean, a generator to run a building of this size, I don't know what it would cost.
$57,000, probably.
Probably. If I was guessing, somewhere between $70,000 and $125,000. $75,000, $125,000.
So, are we saying that basically that was a down payment that year to start this process of investigating and then...
I believe it was the first building.
Drop the building and then come back and see if we, so would we want to, so is it, I mean, it sounds like it's maybe something that fell through the cracks. Well, obviously, both the cracks. But, you know, and maybe now it's something we pick up again if we have new systems in place.
So, I mean, I would kind of go back to what Trevor was saying earlier was, what is the emergency plan for the town? I mean, you do have Frontier, which is an emergency evacuation site across the street. You know what I mean? With the full generator and that kind of stuff and able to run kitchens and whatnot. I mean, to duplicate it across the street. And when I was principal, I used to get the annual call that says, "Are you ready to be in an evacuation center within 24 hours?" And so, they're definitely part of the countywide system. So, we don't have to make any action on this tonight. They have taken the money and they were going to wipe it. And they said, "No, we'll hold it until, you know, for this year as you guys kind of go through and decide what to do with it." And maybe we see how we fit into the greater, the greater plans of the town, you know? See, maybe we don't have information to go forward right now, but that was...
Well, at the very least, we could, hopefully, I mean, you could potentially use this to find out what needs to be done, to set the building up.
Right.
And, I mean, if you, at least, if we at least set it up, you can always rent a portable generator or something like that in a true emergency that you could bring in and link into the building.
Right.
But right now, we don't have the capability of even doing that.
Yeah, I didn't even realize that. But I thought you said it's set up to hook a generator in to do a couple of basic things like the heat.
Right. But our boilers have been changed since then.
Right.
So, okay. And some of the building systems that are in that mechanical room.
Right. When you set up a building like this for a generator, you put certain lines on a generator system so that you have refrigeration moving forward, your heating source moving forward, and you usually have a central area that still has electricity. The same thing is set up at Frontier. The whole building doesn't light up, just key areas, just key areas do. So, yeah.
We should check in, we should talk.
Right. Yeah, I mean, because the town hall is being done, but it wouldn't be as true in emergency center as this would be.
It's smaller than this.
And this has, you can set up the kitchen, you've got dining and capabilities that don't exist in the town hall.
Absolutely.
If we reach that stage where it was truly needed, so...
All right. All right. So, marching orders right now is, I will talk to Bill. And he's going to find out where we're at electric-wise in this building in a sense of moving forward for prep. And then meanwhile, we're also gonna have conversations about what is the emergency plan for the town.
Yep.
You know? And I can have, you know, we can have side conversations with the chiefs of fire and police and figure out what they think is necessary. Because they're, they're planning these kind of things all the time at those, at those systems.
Absolutely.
So, and we'll bring you back.
That sounds good. Great. Thank you.
One more thing to the list.
Back on the list.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion of the, oh, I'm sorry. Discussion of the settlement agreement between the Deerfield School Committees and the Union 38 Instructional Assistance Association for the 2019 through 2022 contract years.
So, we have a copy of the settlement. That can be reviewed in executive session because it is an unassigned copy yet. So, it's technically, we're still in negotiations. So, I recommend we go to, we shuffle that to the end.
Okay.
Go to executive session, but you will have to vote on that. So, we'll have to come back to that executive session to vote that. The other executive session, it's on the, we call it agenda. There we go. Is to approve minutes from previous executive session. So, this one's just kind of some busy work there.
Okay. We've already discussed the charging stations, policy KHC, dissemination of information.
So, you should have in your packets, the first policy, which is, basically what we're doing there is currently, what's happening at all of our elementary schools, more so than secondary, is that outside organizations are distributing flyers and stuff, nonprofit ones, about their different things. And it's cumbersome. We get quite a few, and Tina can jump in at any time. We get quite a few, you know, flyers for good things, you know, but, you know, they're going, we're shoving them in backpacks and, you know, they're getting home as part of the packets. And so, I'd like to go to no longer allowing paper flyers, less at the exception of the principal or the superintendent, and everything be done as part of the principal's report to families via email. And at the end of the, the second half of the emails, just kind of, we've already started doing this, but is the laundry list of different opportunities and things that are going on in the community. There are plenty of exceptions where we can modify this, you know, for example, the PTO doesn't count, you know, anything that the, if anything comes up, it's more emergency or that kind of thing, the principal can make a judgment or I can make a judgment to move away from that. But the average, you know, join the Boy Scouts, you know, that should just go home and instead there's random flyers being handed out at different times. Is there anything that...
No. Agreed.
Agreed that, but agreed that it's at a point where, you know, they're coming in with just stacks and have to divide it up. It takes a lot of office time and it's really, you know...
Exactly. It's a lot of office time. We get a lot of, one, they want us to make the copies warm, two, four, we disseminate them. Teachers can tell you, there's a lot of good home for the kids. So, just putting in our monthly newsletters and we send those out on a Black Bear Bulletin and just having a section for those. I can foresee that there's gonna be times where something comes in just after a newsletter goes out and then we'll have to make a decision, how we send it out, because I may miss a deadline or something.
It'll be, it'll take a year to, we'll be flexible within the first year as well, too. But it'll take a year for you to train all the different groups that they really have to get it to us at the beginning, you know, in order to get out there in time. But, you know, if there's other more important, I won't say more important, but, you know, community events that missed the flyer deadline, I mean, it's not a policy to punish, it's a policy just to kind of make things more efficient for everybody.
Yeah, makes sense.
So, this is a reading, so we're just kind of going through it and we'll be voting at the next meeting.
Okay. And then we have policy IMG-A, dissection and dissection alternatives.
So, as you know, we run, we run the policies through, for all, all five schools to be the same. So, this is really probably more geared to the secondary, although I've seen dissections in sixth grade. When I came through last year, there was something being cut open. Some, was that hard of some sort?
Yeah.
So, anyway, but this is basically, this is, as you can see, was way back in 2005, this elementary and secondary policy, basically having alternatives involved. There's no longer, are you forced to cut open a frog? That we remember from all the movies or our own, our own travels through school. There can be alternatives. And that's been in place already, for those who are wondering what's going on now. It's already been in place at the high school for those classes that do a lot more dissection. But we just want to make sure there's a policy in case, you know, it's usually when something comes up is when someone says, "What's the alternative activity? And what are you providing?" And that kind of explains that in the policy. So, again, just a reading, we'll vote on it next time.
Okay. So, under votes required, we have the delegate representative...
The warrants in 2013 figured this out because no one's in position that was here in 2013. You know, taking from free cash $27,000 to, you know, to put a, as a grant with matching funds, we don't really know where all this went. I don't know if it, whatever, but the money is sitting there. And so what really, so I asked, they said, what do you want to do with it? Do you want to put it back to town? I said, really, I want to bring it back to the committee. This is where it started, to talk about whether or not we should be putting a generator in the school or not. And so if we don't want to use it, the money is only appropriated for that and was, you know, whether or not it can be for that. So we will be giving it back. You can't say, hey, can we use it for books or, you know, vacations?
I don't know if you remember Ken, what that was about. I don't recall.
Well, we talked about, we've talked over the years about a generator for this building. The town's always, you know, they wanted to put a generator down at the treatment plant and, you know.
Yes, we do.
And, you know, there are multiple priorities. Frontier has a generator. It's not the full school, but it's a good emergency system there. And the thought had been in the past that we would have a generator put onto this building so that it could serve as an emergency shelter. That has not received much traction with the select board in the past. But we put $27,000 aside, from my recollection, in 2014, to begin the process of bringing this, this building up so that it could accept a generator. And with the eye towards it being part of an overall, an overall generator budget.
Right.
And I don't know, we've made improvements on the electrical system, I think some in this building, but I don't know exactly what's been done since then.
Right.
You know, when Darius sent this to me, that was my recollection.
Okay.
And I, you know, unless we want to submit a request for a generator in the coming school year again, and see what the town fathers want to do with it, and, you know, the DEDIC wants to do with it, I mean, Capitol Plan wants to do with it.
Right, right.
I don't see any need to put $27,000 on the books. I think we should just...
Yeah, I know that there's, they just prepped the spot for the, the one at the town hall, which I think is going to go in pretty soon. That they've been, we've been sitting on Capitol over there for a couple of years too, kind of waiting to get that done. So I know that that's going to go in, that will power the police station and town hall. So I don't, I was talking to Darius, and if we did have an emergency, I wasn't sure if Frontier could be the, I mean, people would go to Frontier for, you know, it's a bigger building, you've got more accessibility for, for emergency. But again, Frontier is not a Deerfield property, so I wasn't sure if Deerfield had to have its own kind of area, and this was worthy to do. I mean, I could check in with the town and see what the thoughts were, if we want to, if it would be redundant, or if it's something that is still, something that people want to move forward with and would want to fund in the next couple of years.
I mean, beyond an emergency shelter, there's always, you know, there's always a concern that there could be a protracted power outage in town, and it's in the middle of winter.
Right.
How do you keep building systems and how do you keep the building warm so that we don't risk freeze-ups and all the wonderful things that can happen if you're out for a protracted length of time? But that's, I mean, in my, in my years in Deerfield, I mean, my street has lost power for almost 10 days, but not the center of town.
Right.
So I just, I don't know. I, I would like to see personally that we at least have something to run the systems in this building.
Right.
In the event of a protracted power outage.
Was the $27,000 enough to cover the cost of the mess?
That, that would be enough to cover. The, the electrical system that was initially put in in this building provided for a generator link, but all it provided for essentially was the ability to run the boilers and some very minimal systems in the building. So the $27,000 was intended to start the work towards doing all the work in the circuit, you know, the circuit boards and circuit breakers and circuits in the, in the building so that we could switch over to generate the power if we, if we had to, if, if a need arose.
And then you would need to prep the capital.
And then, I mean, a generator to run a building of this size, I, I don't know what it would cost.
Probably...
Probably. If I was guessing, somewhere between $70,000 and $125,000. $75,000, $125,000.
So, so are we saying that basically that was a down payment that year to start this process of investigating and then...
Probably was to prep the building.
Prep the building and then come back and see if we, so would we want to, so is it...
Prep the building, right.
I mean, it sounds like it's maybe something that fell through the cracks. Well, obviously both the cracks. But, you know, and maybe now it's something we pick up again if new systems are in place.
So, I mean, I would kind of go back to what Trevor was saying earlier, was what is the emergency plan for the town? I mean, you do have Frontier, which is an emergency evacuation site across the street. You know what I mean? With the full generator and that kind of stuff, and able to run kitchens and whatnot. I mean, to duplicate it across the street, and when I was principal, I used to get the annual call that says, are you ready to be in evacuation center within 24 hours? And so they're definitely part of the countywide system. So we don't have to make any action on this tonight. They have taken the money and they have, they were going to wipe it, and they, and they said, no, we'll hold it until, you know, for this year, as you guys kind of go through and decide what to do with it. And maybe we see how we fit into the greater, the greater plans of the town, you know? So, maybe we don't have information to go forward right now, but that was...
Well, at the very least, we could hopefully, I mean, you could potentially use this to find out what needs to be done to set the building up.
Right.
And, I mean, if, if you, at least, if we at least set it up, you can always rent a portable generator or something like that in a, in a true emergency, that you could bring in and link into the building.
Right.
But right now, we don't have the capability of even doing that.
Yeah, I didn't even realize that.
But I thought you said it's set up to hook a generator in to do a couple of basic things like the heat.
Right, but our boilers have been changed since then, so, okay.
Yeah.
And some of the building systems that are in that mechanical room.
Right, but you set up a building like this for a generator, you put certain lines on a generator system, so that you have refrigeration moving forward, your heating source moving forward, and you usually have a central area that still has electricity. The same thing is set up in Frontier. The whole building doesn't light up, just key areas, just key areas do, so, so, yeah.
We should check in on what you've talked.
Yeah, I mean, because the town hall is being done, but it, it wouldn't be as true an emergency center as this would be. And this has, you can set up the kitchen, and you've got dining and capabilities that don't exist in the town hall.
Absolutely.
If we, if we reach that stage where it was truly needed, so.
All right, all right. So marching orders right now is I will talk to Bill.
Yeah.
And he's going to find out where we're at electric-wise in this building in a sense of moving forward for prep. And then meanwhile, we're also going to have conversations about what is the emergency plan for the town.
Yep.
You know, and I guess, you know, we can have side conversations with, with the chiefs of fire and the police and figure out what they think is necessary. Because they're, they're planning these kind of things all the time at those, at those systems.
Absolutely.
So.
Yep.
And we'll bring you back.
That sounds good. Great. Thank you.
One more thing to the list.
Yep. Back on the list.
Discussion of the, oh, I'm sorry, discussion of the settlement agreement between the Deerfield School Committees and the Union 38 Instructional Assistance Association for the 2019 through 2022 contract years.
So we have a copy of the settlement. That can be reviewed in executive session because it is not a signed copy yet, so it's technically still in negotiations. So I recommend we go to, we put the, we shuffle that to the end.
Okay.
Go to executive session, but you will have to vote on that. So we'll have to come back to that in executive session to vote that.
Yep.
The other executive session that's on the, on the, what do you call it, agenda? There we go. Is to approve minutes from previous executive sessions. So this one's just kind of some, some busy work there.
Okay. We've already discussed the charging stations, policy KHC, dissemination of information.
So you should have in your packets, the first policy, which is basically what we're doing there is currently the, what's happening at, at all of our elementary schools, more so than secondary, is that outside organizations are distributing flyers and stuff, nonprofit ones, about their different things. And it's cumbersome. We get quite a few, and Tina can jump in at any time. We get quite a few, you know, flyers for good things, you know, but, you know, they're going, we're shoving them in backpacks and, you know, they're, they're getting home as part of the packets. And so I'd like to go to no longer allowing paper flyers, unless at the exception of the principal or the superintendent, everything be done as part of the principal's report to families via email. And at the end of the, the second half of the emails, just kind of, we've already started doing this, but it's the, it's the laundry list of different opportunities and things that are going on in the community. There are plenty of exceptions where we can modify this, you know, for example, the PTO doesn't count, you know, anything that the, if anything comes up, it's more emergency or that kind of thing, the principal can make a judgment or I can make a judgment to move away from that. But the average, you know, join the Boy Scouts, you know, that should just go home and they, instead of just random flyers being handed out at, at different times. Is there anything that...
No, agreed.
Agreed, but agreed that it's at a point where, you know, you're coming in, we're just stacked and it has to be divided up. It takes a lot of office time and it's really, you know...
Exactly. It's a lot of office time. We get a lot of, sometimes they want us to make the copies warm too, or we disseminate them, and teachers can tell you there's a lot of good fun, all the kids. So just putting in our monthly newsletters and we send those out on the Black Bear Bulletin and just having a section for those. I can foresee that there's going to be times where something comes in just after a newsletter goes out, and then we'll have to make a decision, how do we send it out because I might miss a deadline or something.
It'll be, it'll take a year to, we'll be flexible within the first year as well too, but it'll take a year for training all the different groups that they really have to get it to us in the beginning, you know, in order to get out there in time. But, you know, if there's other more important, I won't say more important, but, you know, community events that missed the flyer deadline, I mean, it's not a policy to punish, it's a policy just to kind of make things more efficient for everybody.
Yeah, makes sense.
So this is a reading, so we're just kind of going through it and we'll be voting out at the next meeting.
Okay. And then we have policy IMG A, dissection and dissection alternatives.
So as you know, we run, we run the policies through, for all, all five schools to be the same. So this is really probably more geared to the secondary, although I've seen dissections in sixth grade. When I came through last year, it was something being cut open. Some, was it hard or some sort?
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, but this is basically, this is, as you can see, was way back in 2005, this elementary and secondary policy, basically having alternatives involved. There's no longer, are you forced to cut open a frog? That we remember from all the movies or our own, our own travels through school. There can be alternatives, and that's been in place already, for those who are wondering what's going on now. It's already been in place at, at the high school for those classes that do a lot more dissection. But we just want to make sure there's a policy in case, you know, it's usually when something comes up, is when someone says, what's the alternative activity and what are you providing? And that kind of explains that in that policy. So again, just a reading, we'll vote on it next time.
So under votes required, we have a delegate representative, which was table, a delegate to vote, and recommended proposal of capital appropriation funds, which would have been the...
Generator, you want me to take action on that, so you two can wrap. I've got a whole lot done tonight.
It's called efficiency.
Or easing engineering.
And the next vote will go into executive session prior to that, and, let's have orders down. We can give my reports. We can jump to reports. Committee and chairman, I have no report to give, so. The collaborative.
Presenting a meeting, isn't it?
I don't know, I don't, I don't think you've had a meeting yet, have you?
Yep.
And the principals' report.
I feel like Darius was just giving the very important here, I mean, what's he thinking? So we shed a little lime late on our students as we all wore some green shirts for opening day, and thank the teachers for joining in on that. That was Jen's favorite color, so that was good. Yeah. Yeah, we're off to a great start. Bass, I'm not sure where summer went, I'm not sure how you guys feel about it, but I feel like our building was busy all summer long, so it kind of just shifted right into the school year. So come visit us and see all the new faces we have. We have a lot of, I mean, what do we have, four new instructional assistants? Their names are there. We have some teachers, I can read them on. Anybody interested? Yeah, you're good? Okay. You know, we have new AP Kathy Smith, we have new special education secretary, and we have a new long-term special education liaison, because there's a lot of new faces that come and come. Coming up this Friday, we have our district kick off for professional development, and Kim has done loads of work, preparing for a gala-type event. Everyone will meet at the high school, and we're really working to promote academic rigor in student engagement through a social emotional lens with a trauma focus this year. These topics were chosen by teachers through surveys. Our building-based PLCs, teachers have selected books and they'll dig a little deeper on each topic in the building base. More information to come, we'll keep you posted on our work. Our instructional leadership team will meet this week to review the preliminary data that's out for NCAS and other data points, just to listen for patterns and trends. We meet throughout the year to just kind of inform our instructional practices, but we begin that this week. I have a facilities report, Bill would be able to give him that?
No.
I invited Bill. Bill's done a lot of work, he's really kind of meshed his way right in. He's kind of really fit in, he's typically around running. We've already, we've done a lot of work with the custodians, but I thought it would be great for him to come in and share some of the, some of his accomplishments actually in the first short time he's been here.
Yeah, so we, Tina and I together have been meeting monthly with the custodians, and we've both been working on a draft of a handbook that she started. We're trying to strengthen the team that we already have, the great team that we already have. The summer, we were able to get the gym floor refurbished, came out beautiful. What was that, a two and a half point line or something?
Yes.
The office speechroom floor was redone with vinyl plank, came out real nice. We think we're going to try a couple classrooms here, maybe February vacation. We've got some money allotted for that, and we're going to, we're going to try the vinyl plank in those classrooms.
There was a new material that we were trialing, and we've put in the office because it's a high-traffic area.
I saw that.
And it's supposed to have some lower maintenance to it, so we, we put it in there to see how it was going to hold up, and we're thinking that we might go down to the classrooms.
That'd be great.
No waxed, I don't know if that's a, I'm not a custodian, but I think the waxing is a, a lot of work to keep it.
It's nicer, easier to clean, it's mappable, and then you can, if you have some damage, you can just replace the plank that's damaged.
Right.
The only negative part that could come is like, in a room like this, is acoustics, because the carpet helps you with that. The vinyl could make it louder, but...
But we were looking to move that away from a lot of the carpet anyways, because those things are...
Right, they have to stay tiled and placed.
The tiled, right. So that's good. Is that right?
Yeah. Carrier carpets now.
Yes.
Right.
And we need to replace those a lot more. We've got a, we had a problem out here in the loading area, in the delivery area with the, with the concrete, and we got that all patched up, and I've got a contractor coming in to put a layer of Arndex down, which will buy us a lot of time and preserve that, preserve that area for a long time without having to replace the whole, the whole surface area out there.
It kind of makes it a uniform color too, so it's going to visually appealing too.
Great.
Yep. And the bathrooms that were already planned prior to me coming here, those are all lined up for February vacation. New floor, new partitions.
Great.
And they're going to look great, yeah. Yep, and...
We'll keep rolling on those.
I haven't read the last one?
No, and we're looking, we're also working to schedule the two classroom carpet replacements that we have in the budget for that same week, so we figured we'd have everybody come in during the time.
Yep.
And now you can read the last line.
I am enjoying work, my work with Tina.
Okay, right, thanks Bill.
You know, our, our plan is to just, as you, as you go around, is to continue with that.
Yep.
We want to just, and know with that capital, I'd really love to see, I'm so glad you're on board, I'd love to, you know, working with the capital improvement planning committee in town. We'd love by December 1st to have our, our capital requests in. So if you, you know, in the next couple of months, look around and see what needs to happen, we can get that into capital planning early and we'll, we'll get that stuff on the board.
So we talked about that, that we want to have kind of very, very transparent what our next, our three-year capital planning goals are.
That'd be great.
You know, obviously I want the committee and us to be able to control the priorities of moving on that, because you may have something that's a level three priority the next year, it broke faster than you expected and be able to move it up.
Yep.
But, but people can see that, hey, we have a $50,000, we have a $100,000 thing or maybe, you know, the larger, you know, the ones that we can't do inside our budget.
Perfect.
And I have a decent-sized file too on that generator topic, whenever you guys want to get back to that, we can do that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, or we can. For sure.
Trevor, I know you've done a lot of work helping come up with the bathroom restorations, but we are going with plastic, if that's not called plastic, what do we do for stalls? It's plastic?
Yeah.
Great. Perfect.
That should be, that would have been my specific request, is to steer clear this thing.
Yes, yeah. That'll be great.
Well, we're doing that just for you.
I haven't seen many plastic...
We've also started the playground safety, paying a lot more attention to that, playground safety chip maintenance.
Good.
And I'd just like to take this last minute here just to thank the town DPW department, they've been a big help too. I had some safety issues out there, and they've provided me with some materials and helped us really get the school, was looking great to open up, so...
Yes, yeah, thank you. No, it's all looking really good, it was nice to see. You know, even coming through Frontier and seeing all the windows washed and all the stuff you do, and it's, it really means a lot, you know, it really means a lot.
The department lines paying...
Yeah, it looks great. So thank you for that, for that work.
Thank you.
Thanks. Glad you enjoy working with me, I enjoy working with you too. So, some technology updates, we kind of talked about the FOBS, and I just wanted to thank the teachers, because during that high time the teachers wanted to get in here, you know, the week or two before school starts, that's when we decided to switch over from the keypads to the FOBS, and so they were like, we need to get in. But they did a fabulous job of working around the schedules and coming in to get the FOBS. But so far, in our eight days of using the FOBS, no problems.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
That's really great.
So classroom news, oh, you know, for technology, we also got a mobile screen. I was asking Darius and Trevor, what should we call this? I don't know what to call it.
Interactive panel.
An interactive panel, where now we can have our presentations and it's on the roof. I think Darius kind of prompted that, because he was, wanted something for one of the school committee meetings, I don't even know. I was like, oh, let me get the projector out.
Yeah.
He's like, what are you doing? Like, I don't know, I didn't know there was such a thing, so...
It's like a big iPad.
Yeah, yeah. So we're excited about that. I can't say as if we've used it, but the librarian's really excited to have it in here. I'm sure she'll put it together.
She's used it a number of...
So basically, the technologies is they're going to be close to the same price as smart boards. And so most of our classrooms have smart boards, and they're starting to get older and the bulbs are starting to go, and the interactive's starting to go, and so their tech was starting to experiment with different ones of these, because they will last longer, the bulb, they're guaranteed longer as well, so, I don't know, technology keeps changing. But the smart board was the coolest thing, now this is the coolest thing.
But the mobility on that is great, because usually we have to hook up to a smart board and go to the room, so having just the flexibility will prove to be helpful, because I can't say as soon as we do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we will.
Yes.
So and then we have a lot of, first, we have a lot of news that's happening in the classrooms, because as you know, we do not give those kids any time to relax, you know, they've been working on routines, and the firsties are, you know, writing a book and getting to know themselves, and they'll be sharing that with their classmates and families, and second graders are doing the same thing, trying to get to know each other, like doing that through acrostic poems. Second grade says, come check them out on curriculum night, that's coming up. Sixth grade has been doing some inspirational math with You Cute, and there's some photos at the end of the, of students working on some of those.
Great.
And in Spanish, oh, Spanish, I always love them, they write these for me because I'm going to practice my Spanish. So they're working on hola amigos. And the returning students are singing a song about loose teeth, because apparently we have a lot of those happening. And they're calling it, which means loose. It could be run in Spanish.
Good.
But, yeah, so that's it. We're off to a big start this year.
That's awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good to see you.
All right, very similar. We had a great opening, first day with, we had a great opening first day with teachers, and then we also had a great opening first day with students, you know, just to echo what Tina said, it went very well. You know, currently tonight, we'll be looking at, the next thing we want to do is negotiations. We'll be looking at the IAs, we're still working with the teachers, right now, currently in mediation. We had a meeting last week, and we'll be meeting again in about a, it's about a month if we just have to, we have the schedules work. But hopefully we'll be able to close out that soon as well. I left in June with the superintendent evaluation, so that's going to go with the chairs. I have a meeting set for the 24th right now, and be able to bring that to the full joint meeting, which we kind of talked about, doing an evaluation, kind of bouncing around the different, instead of all together at once, so I'll try to, I want to try to figure a way to do it streamlined, so we don't spend the whole meeting on evaluation when we have a lot of other business stuff. The safe school community is great, we talked about it earlier, but you can see what other schools were awarded in our district. I was reminded by a school community member who tech attended, we tended the MASC training, and Carrie was there as well, and they really recommend, not just recommend, they, you need to be able to archive emails, and so I'll be sending everyone email addresses, and whether or not you want to get on board with that, we can have a discussion, whatever, but I really have to kind of push that out there and have you reject not to do it, because according to my legal counsel, they said you really should provide it to every school community member, so that they're there. And then you can have it forwarded, and I can have IT do that for you. If you, let's say you have a Yahoo account, so anytime I send an email to the school, the school account, go forward it to your other account. You just have to make sure when you're replying, you go back to, if you do, you turn your school business off of that.
Yeah.
The concern is that if you're doing private business, if you're doing school business on your private account, and someone ever wants to see your records of your correspondence, that could get, you know...
Unlucky.
Yeah, just, I don't, I know, and some people are like, I don't, that's all I use my school, I account for you probably, then you're probably just fine, but you just have to kind of, my job is to pass that on to the...
Good point.
Then, everyone, just the Frontier, as I said, on my superintendent's report, I have stuff that's going on in other buildings as well, but we did finally get the approval for the capital improvement bond, and so I'm in the process of right now, working with Lock and Law at the Bond Council to secure the funds. So it's, it's a long process, I'm learning, that you don't just get the money after you